Okay, we'll call a meeting at 4:02. Please stand before the ladies and gentlemen.
I'm glad that you're here. To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second that.
Motion made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
Right in your packet you'll find there's some informational items there and some letters. So I'll just move right on down to the public comment period. When you, whoever wants to get up and talk, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the town reporter.
And address. Name and address, please.
Name and address. Go ahead.
My name is Jan Wright, 31 South By Street. I have a couple concerns. I think that the majority of us here are here concerning the water. I'm also here concerning racism. We have a difficult time with it here in this county from lack of exposure to other cultures. And I think that a public conversation about it would be really helpful. So maybe you guys can think about it and maybe put together some kind of action committee or something so we can facilitate a conversation, get something going, where we can dialogue about that. Hopefully not at the Indian Village. But you know, if we can just have enlightenment, we're all guilty, I mean, no one's blameless. We don't understand a lot of things. And if we can just be more informed and understand and celebrate our differences and be eager and excited about discovering other cultures. Anyway, and then the water. And I think other people can probably speak more eloquently about that than me. Although I have to say, when I first moved here 20 years ago, 21 years ago, God, getting off of Lakeview, how did that happen? But anyway, there was a... My first awareness was a concern about the water at that time. And there was a study at the library, I believe it's still available, about it because there was a high incidence of cancer at that time. So they did a study. And that study is available at the library. And it was more about uranium mining, the kales and the cleanup that took place, I believe it was in the 80s, I don't really know. So, anyway, that's a concern. And I'd like to know about our water sources and all the others. I'm sure everyone will have a good question. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Anna Marie Dent. I'm at 1800 North 4th Street, Space 18, Lakeview. I was born in this town 70 years ago. And family moved away. I was raised in Lakeview and Alters and Dunsmere and weed raised basically in Klamath Falls. So I'm familiar with what the water tastes like around volcanoes. It's kind of fuzzy a little bit. Okay, so when I was little, I spent every single summer and all my holidays here at my grandpa's house. And the water was not like this. And we were in the, you know, yard, playing in the garden, all that. Anyway, I moved here to take care of my dad four, five years ago from Lake Tahoe. It's a small water company that they had there too. They had the same problem of replacing lines. It was very doable. My friend Robbie Mars' family ran the water company. I talked to him about this. And understandable, there's going to be some uranium, it's got to show up in the soil, I mean, it's just everywhere. We're permeated with it. But I'm curious about, has anybody inquired about the military disposal site north of town? And the fact that it's leaking? And it may affect not just our water table, but the entire base? And I'm curious about that. And I understand we may qualify for help from the government if we don't pass tests. Well, we do get tested, but they're all tested within the state. I think it would be wise to get an outside state water tester. I have a great name of a company real close in Reno. And granted, you might want to dig another well, but that's not going to help the pipes. Some of these pipes are 100 years old. They've got to be replaced. And people enter your property, well, not necessarily. And it's everywhere. And it's because the lines are being flushed. Well, you're flushing the lines a lot lately, based on what's coming out of my faucet. And I'd like to know how, when it comes out looking like coffee, that passes a test. I'm done. I'm not happy about it.
Well, I understand where you're coming from. And we are working on the water system. Hasn't something that's gone unnoticed. Alberta has been putting in for grants to try so we can get some pipes replaced. Daryl has got her water master plan done. And so we will know what pipes need to be replaced first. And we talked about that earlier today. Jeff has been flushing lines more than they've ever been flushed. And he brought Oring as well as to help out. But I have run across some people that their pipes in their house have been there when the house was built and nothing been done. I've replaced some in mine already. And my son-in-law is replacing some in his. And it's helped, but...
My house, 30 years there. My neighbor's had to replace a water heater three times. And hers is even newer because of the water.
But yeah, it hasn't gone unnoticed. We are, we are working on it. And it's something that we can't do overnight. We are aware that there is pipes that need to be replaced. We also talked about a treatment plant, filter system. But that really can't be put in until we get some pipes replaced. And there is projects in the works. I just got through with one down on South 9th. We placed some stuff down through there. I think Jeff can tell you more about that and what project you've got coming up. But I just want everybody to know that it hasn't gone unnoticed. And we have been working on it for quite some time. You know, and part of it is money. You know, we can apply a dozen grants. And if we get one, we're lucky. Because we're not the only ones applying for the same grant.
Well, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Just as a FYI, you have to upgrade, you have to have a master, water master plan in order to get some of this funding. And in order to... Daryl is just completing an upgrade. Our last water master plan was completed, what, 15, 16 years ago? So we applied and got a grant. So he's just finished that now. So that we are eligible for funding. Because sometimes if those grants are not up to date, then you can't get it. It's like building a house. If you don't have your foundation, you can't build the top of your house. So, I mean, it's just that type of thing. So we are working on it. Daryl's working on it. And Jeff's working on it. And we've up, we've increased, like you said, the flushing of the lines, which will help. But, and we're trying to get out there and do it. We were supposed to do it today. It's too cold. So do you want the ice problem? Or do we wait another day or two? And so that's what we're doing. We're trying to get them updated more often, so.
What about our water sources? How are they? Like, we get spring water and then well water?
Right.
I mean, how are they? Are they good?
Yeah. Get a test for water once a week?
You know, what we have available to us is what we have to use. The spring water is great, but we only get it, you know, in the springtime. And by the time we really need it in the summertime, when it starts running out, we have started using the wells. And we do have one new well, but we've had some issues with it. I think until we get the issues resolved with it, the old wells we have are better quality water. They all pass all the tests from the state, you know, as far as levels of contaminants. They consider what we have in our water to be more of a nuisance than a hazard.
So the brown comes from?
The brown is a combination of iron and manganese. And it looks pretty clear when it comes out of the well. And then when it hits the chlorine, the chlorine oxidizes it and it loses some of that particulate.
What about the holding tanks? You know, where the...
We clean the holding tanks every year now. They used to get cleaned every other year. We're cleaning them every year. All seal them, drain them.
What kind of shape are they in?
They're in great shape, actually. They're coated inside with epoxy and, you know, in good shape. They do get sediment in the bottom of them. We hose them out every year, flush them the heck out of the lines. We just have so many options we can do. We have to use the wells that we have. And we're trying to get our new well back online, but we're, we have some issues we're working through with them.
Anybody else?
Claire Rome and I don't live in town, but I have some property in town. And I just wanted to say, this is probably a little unusual, but that as a taxpayer, I'm willing to pay for it. And I just wanted to make sure that not only, you know, I can see a water bill going up, but also property taxes. Because anybody, any of us who own property in town, we want to have the best water coming to our property. And yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, all kinds of, you know, break it up into tiny little bits and pieces and maybe we could all be paying a little bit and get the job done.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, move on to department reports. Daryl? Jan, you make the report?
Well, of course, we have the update here prior to the meeting on the water. We are working also on that J Street intersection that the town received that special cities allotment. So we'll be coming with a close plan on that, I suppose.
Okay. Claire Chief, she is not here. 911 Director Scott Elling.
Information's in the report, if anybody has any questions. Our, we're working continuously with five different agencies in Toronto, Airbus, Motorola, Quest, CenturyLink, ECATS. Our system should be shipped probably, it'll be here Friday. And that's our seven-foot cabinet well that will not fit in our room. But it's dealing with Ontario, or, we're dealing with a Viper, which is CML, that's for a 911 switch. And it's a virtual system. And so the bigwigs in Ontario, Canada, said this is what we need. And with Ryan, with CenturyLink, and all the site visits we had, the cabling people that came in and all this, they say it's not going to work. So they shipped it. And it's en route. And now they're shipping us another cabinet to, and they're going to move everything from the seven-foot cabinet to the four-foot cabinet. The seven-foot cabinet weighs 1,700 pounds. And they said, and this, yeah, and said, like, you can just, like, move it in there. And we're going, you and how many gorillas are going to move this stuff in? So, so what they're doing is they're going to credit us $8,000 for that cabinet, not anything in it. And we're giving a four-foot cabinet for $4,000. Hopefully all this will fit and all the virtual stuff will work. And that's way over my pay grade on how this computer stuff works. But it's scheduled to come in this Friday. And then they'll start working on moving the equipment from the seven-foot cabinet to the four-foot cabinet. We're slating, we're trying to get on the line around March 13th, 14th should be. We'll have five days of all the 15 different techs and computer people trying to get it all working. And then we'll cut over sometime between midnight and 4:00 in the morning. And then we're still waiting for Airbus to come in for our mapping system, which is somewhere between here and France, I guess, I don't know. I think Motorola just bought Airbus, so I think... That's where we're set. It's been a little stressful that we've been doing conference calls with all these vendors and engineers weekly. And I think we're almost to the point where... And I chose to be the last one in the state to be upgraded. And this, all this equipment is paid by the telephone tax. When you have a cellphone, you pay 75 cents a month. So all this telephone equipment is paid by the state. If we had to pay for it ourselves, it'd be the old rotary telephone. Anyway, so hopefully we'll be on target for March, March.
Okay. Public Works Director Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I put... That's okay, I'm back in the corner.
No. You go right ahead, Terry.
I, wow, this is the first town council I've been to in a long time. Realistically, we're just playing catch-up at this point. We've got, well, three of us right now. We've, hopefully, knock on wood, the new guy that we just got hired. Everything will go well with him and he'll be starting shortly. I do believe he has been set up to get, or has been scheduled for the academy here shortly, so we can get him up and going pretty fast. We've got a interim chief that comes over about three days a week and he's getting things squared away for us for everything else, I guess, for the, happens next, I guess. He's so far been an absolute pleasure to work for and work with. He's very knowledgeable in what he does and glad to have him aboard. We're going to get to it.
Okay, now we'll go back to Jeff.
Well, about the only thing that I have to add that we, that I didn't have in my report is we're taking advantage of the weather break we've had. And we're doing some, some stuff in the parks. We're trimming the trees and getting everything up to snuff that we normally do in the spring. We've got no snow on the ground, so we trim all the trees we could safely trim out of the borrowed bucket truck from the county. And then we had some professionals come in and do everything from 40 feet above. So we're, we'll be in real good shape when they get done later this week with the boat parks, we have all the... We had some concerned citizens with some of the trees and they were, haven't been trimmed in 20 years. So for getting that taken care of, that's about, it's the only thing I didn't add on my report.
Looks good over there except that one tree that has nothing, I don't know.
It's maybe a palm tree.
Okay.
It had some broken limbs and it had rock, so there was just no place to stop on it.
Yeah. It looks pretty weird.
Dr. Seuss Tree, they're calling it.
Yes, that's a good description.
Down Manager, Alberta?
The only thing I needed to add is I attended a railroad advisory committee meeting right before board session. And it looks like they're going to be moving forward with quite a few projects. I did have a handout in the office in your packet for the next meeting on what they're doing. But one of the things I was really excited about is that 3rd Street Crossing at the railroad that's so rough. And I've been trying to get the county to use them. They have set aside some funding so that they're going to work on that, which is really good, so.
3rd Street Crossing?
Yes, South 3rd. Because in my little car, it's not good. I bought a map.
Why would you cross me on the line?
That's why I can say.
Now we're into the old business. Remember that one? Resolution number 293? Oh, that's new business.
There is no old business. That was at the bottom.
Resolution 923, approval of public lease agreement extension? Do I hear a motion on that?
Do we have any discussion on this? This is, this is just what we've done in the past, isn't it?
It is. We've done it for a couple of years.
Can you just give us a brief, just a little background on it?
It's where a well that we have with the DOC. And so every two years we've renewed the agreement. And I talked to the other representatives and they both said it was great. They had to do this, so.
I move we approve the resolution number 923 in the matter of approving the fourth extension of geowell lease agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion's made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number 924, matter of approval in the intergovernmental acquisition of federal property? Then if you're, this is the property on 2nd and 8th.
Where Fish and Wildlife was. And when Travis was here, he was talking about getting that lease of property acquired.
And we're using it for?
Stores.
Stores.
Parks.
Landowners.
It's got several ways.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the fire department was going to take part of it also.
Oh, okay, so.
So, yeah.
Public Works, some areas, police department, you know, whatever area we need some storage type thing. So, we're just finishing up the process. And it had to have a resolution signed, you know, for the council that'd be in the packet, submit to the state.
I know the county, the Fish and Wildlife, a few years ago, went to the county and asked them if they wanted the property. So I'm glad that we picked it up. I mentioned it to the previous town manager. I'm glad that it's been identified now.
I think we'll be able to use it effectively.
So I would make a motion to approve the resolution number 924 in the matter of approving the application for federal surplus property. But we're committed to convey.
Second. Motion's made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
We'll move on to resolution 925. I got it here, I got it right here. Approving mortgage co-op procurement program agreement? Do I hear a motion on that one?
We have been in agreement with them for several years in order to purchase different products at a state rate where, you know, a lot of cities go together and have formed this cooperative. So, and I don't know if you guys knew that, the DOC, or they might have their own. But anyway, it helps us. You know, one of the things that we buy right now for them is we have staples at the end of the card. So our products from Staples are normally cheaper than what you would buy if you just bought them from Staples itself. That type of thing, so.
Additional buying power.
Yeah.
I move we approve resolution number 925 in the matter of approving the agreement with Oregon Cooperative Procurement Program.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 926, is approval of intergovernmental location agreement with ODOT.
I would move we approve resolution number 926 in the matter of approving the intergovernmental co-location agreement amendment 01 with the state of Oregon through ODOT.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
No, I can't.
Okay, next on, on the list is the oil TC license for liquor walkers.
I move we approve the liquor license application for lake view walkers as presented.
Second.
Throw it in favor.
Aye.
Can I make your appoint a budget officer?
Do we have any candidates? Hey, we've got a bunch of people out there that are concerned. Raise your hand if you want to be a budget officer.
I move we appoint our county manager, the mayor of the town, and our budget manager.
Do I hear a second? Want to make a second, throw it in favor.
Aye.
Local light construction substantial completion.
Basically, that's information. However, we are, we've had some pretty, some good discussions with engineer and public works that they have till the end of this month to get that completed. So totally completed, not just substantially completed.
Okay. I think we've got our map here for, next on the agenda is road closure for Irish Days.
So I printed everything off the list for Irish Days where it'll be closed. Attached is the signatures needed for the road closure along with certificate of insurance for the town of Lakeview and ODOT. And it'll take about a half hour. The Irish Days Parade isn't very long, real short.
Isn't that the same ones that we always close off?
Yeah, it's exactly the same. It's, Irish Days is exactly the same. Labor Day will have a different topic. But this one's going to be just like normal.
I don't see any problem. Is there anybody else?
We have talked to our police acting...
I have his signature on the dotted line.
Good. We always like them to know, really, because they're the ones that have to set up the barriers and know what's happening.
And state police also said that they will accompany them. So they're, since they're shorthanded, they go flush.
Sounds good. Sounds like you guys have done your due diligence.
All right, next on the agenda is the...
Do you need a vote on that? We just do a recommendation, don't we? That you call a few...
Don't read it.
Consensus, can you?
Thanks, Brianna. Uh, in Special City Water, for Rand Brown.
Information. It's informational. And Daryl mentioned that in his report, we're working on that intersection of, on J...
Missouri.
And Missouri. So that's, that's the one we...
No more potholes?
No. We'll see. But anyway, that's the one we applied, put the application in for. So, and we will be getting $50,000 from the state.
Okay, next on the list is LCP layer on request.
Well, we talked about that in the past, but we had agreed.
Oh, you want to speak?
Not necessarily. You have a question.
I want to hear your voice.
You like to hear my voice, oh, okay. As you all know, LCP was not awarded, we were awarded a rare Americorps person this year, but they were not able to fill it. So what we are going to do is hire someone from the community as a part-time, 20 hours a week position. And we just want to make sure that we're transparent and everybody knows where the money goes since you had requested, or since you had given us some money for the rare... Since you had requested, or since you had given us some money for the rare person, now we would like to use it for our, the same position, only they're a employee.
So now it's a salary position?
It's a salary position, yes.
Well, we budgeted the money and we're just asking for a difference. You said that.
Correct. Yeah, we move that we approve payment of twenty-five hundred dollars for salary to LCP for the purpose of applying a part-time employee.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the list is our liaison positions.
I wanna thank you guys for being nice to me.
This isn't a final this year.
Oh, I think it's.
I'm fine.
Sure, it's fine. I will say this, that my appointment to the railroad commission, I'm pretty sure that the last time I went before the board with Suzanne Stewart and talked about the railroad situation that they didn't want me to darken their door.
But we need a representative, but we need a representative from the town on that railroad board.
There isn't one.
Roberta is.
There isn't. All Roberta's.
The board that I was appointed to doesn't even exist anymore.
I was just invited to an advisory committee board meeting today and that's why I went, so.
What I used to belong to.
I need to take the place.
I'm sure I would have limited the impact.
Did they give you notice of why the board was?
No, no. That was our comment, that all this whole change and everything that happened with the railroad was totally non-transparent. It was not handled with the advisory board, it was not handled with any of the people, it was not in the paper, it was not until it was done deal. And that was our main complaint, that it, not maybe even that it happened, but nobody had gone through what we thought was a public transparent change in the, what we'd had before to where we are now. So, we had been left totally out of that.
Can we ask for a rundown on what occurred and why that commission or council disappeared?
You can ask.
Uh, I think everyone's undergoing change and I think we, you know.
It's there, it's done.
Yeah. We could go on about that for a long time, but could be the state decided, well, there should be our liaison or someone else on the council. And if someone else on the council would wanna take that job.
Because David Berman has to be on it, so that's.
Are you comfortable with her group?
And actually, it was a very good meeting and they really had a lot of goals for two thousand eighteen and I think with the new ownership, we're gonna see some positive changes, 'cause it does go down to the Perez.
It's what?
That is California.
Our line goes to.
Ours goes out first, but it's continuing. And so we've got two, two companies that are shipping out of Lakeview and one that is shipping, um, out of Perez, uh, you know, a different direction. So, I mean, they are gaining some, so, yeah.
And it's very important that we have a viable railroad, especially if we ever expect Red Rock to come in.
When?
When Red Rock comes in. I understand correct?
No, I'm.
So, we would take that off of our list.
I don't think they would mind somebody from the council going.
Do they really expect it to be an ongoing advisory position or just when they need you?
They didn't set another date, so. They probably get after it, because I haven't come to that other meeting.
Okay. Sammy? Can I swap, swap with you the Saturday market for the shooting range?
Yes. That could keep. Um, boy, isn't that a, the shooting range is a bit. No, he will take the shooting range and we're gonna do.
Anybody else want to swap things around?
I would like to ask if we are going to have another liaison appointment. And if so, I would like to put my name in the hat for a lot of your tax advisory, hard lot of your tax period. I just noticed that we've got planning and so, and if there is a need for a liaison, I would. And I would give up another one of mine if I need to.
Well, you, you have the Lake County Emergency Management Committee, which is now, this is under my name, but, um, since I've been back on the board, I haven't really.
Is it, would you like fire department?
Uh, if you wanna change those two?
Is that all right with you?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay with everyone else?
I'm confused about the lodging tax thing.
We.
As, I, I know, I know what you're referring to, but it was my understanding that the board that was appointed would report to us.
Definitely, just like our planning.
But you wouldn't be.
Just like our planning. No, I'm not on the board, no, no, just a liaison. That's just like our liaison to our planning committee.
Yeah, we should not be on that board as such.
Right.
Because the board is independent of us to decide how.
That will be our council decision.
To accept. And then they, then they bring those decisions to us or those finalists, I guess you might say, and then we decide.
Right.
Okay, next.
And if I can just add something, uh, last week I had a visit from the people from southern, visit southern Oregon and they have seen many towns go through the process for the advisory committee and, and how they have ran it after they have developed it and the recommendations. And they both volunteered to come help us set up that committee.
Good.
So, and they're excellent and they, they wanna help more, you know, you know, southern Oregon does include us here in central Oregon, basically, or what you wanna say, but they do wanna come help us more and come to Lakeview more, so that would be a, look at the help that they can be on it or without, so.
Would you wanna, would you wanna give?
Fire, fire department and the Lake County emergencies.
I remember you want that here.
Lake County. I'm taking Lake County.
From Lake County Public Safety?
And Sammy's taking.
The safety committee is ours and I don't know what the Lake County Public Safety. Well, that's, uh, yeah, that's with the probation officer, probation department.
Oh, that one, yeah. Yeah, okay. You want that one?
Sure. Will we see a list, a, a list of all of these liaisons?
I can make of us. That would be good, once we get it.
Yeah.
She has one that we can busy changing, so.
Very, very updated.
Excuse me, what did you guys swap that in the?
Uh, they didn't swap anything, but I will just take the Lake County Public Safety committee.
Thank you.
We have the background for that.
I was on it before, so.
Is anybody else? Any other changes?
Discord, discord means, have we ever been able to get to them at all? 'Cause I've been kind of dold, rolling in, I know you're on there too, but.
Are you, is, um, it's on the raise.
Yeah, it's on the raise. I'm not gonna double.
Darwin, you have a lot.
Well, most of them don't meet that often and they're kinda dumb up.
And if you're going anywhere.
And a lot of them I do, you know, kinda double it up with.
How often are the chicken ones?
Yeah, I go to the chicken.
I mean, how often are they?
Other disciplines.
You want to go in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is Darwin's tickets going? What about? Are you on the stack, Al?
That's probably more of mine either, but, yeah.
So.
They always on the stack.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm fine with mine. At least he replied to me to switch on that one, so that's fine.
Now, okay, you had the fire department.
Yes, I, and that's what I switched with you for, the Lake County Emergency.
Okay, I was thinking that.
But you did public safety, you were a Lake County public safety.
I was thinking.
I got one of those too.
I guess I'm doing EMS and dispatch.
Take two.
Those two.
I'm good. Uh, in the packet, there's, you have a legislative session preview. And need more decisions. Um, I wanna remind everybody, um, this week, weather permitting, you'll be flushing lines.
Next week.
Is it next week?
Well, they were here.
We pretty much missed our opportunity this week.
Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week.
Well, Monday is a, is a holiday, so it's actually gonna end up being Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Okay, but it's next week.
Yeah.
Well, so you're not gonna try tomorrow.
It doesn't really do any good to do one day. Yeah, it needs to be back.
It's gonna be pretty cold tomorrow.
Yes, no, in the forecast tomorrow.
How often is, or do you flush the lines?
Uh, we used to do it twice a year and this'll be our, well, this is the first time for this new year, but, uh, last year we did it four times.
Definitely helps the water quality. I know if anybody here is drinking bottled water. Oh.
I mean, he's sitting there, but I'm drinking bottled water.
Next on the list is the county council update. Council has anything?
Are you, are you speaking first?
I can.
Okay.
Um, I have been working with Roberta and she's been keeping me well informed on our police chief situation and, um, we've been talking back and forth with Jeff on the water situation as well, about every day of the week. I went out to the prison for their meeting and, um, they will let us know when they are gonna decide to do their greenhouses and how they were gonna set it up so we can get with you and you can actually go out and get with them. That work, Steve?
It does, but we're, the greenhouse is a ways off, Jeff. Yeah, yeah. I heard some positive news today about solar facility. I had an email saying that somewhere at the town was talking, uh, and then asked that Warner Creek be included in it and I didn't get through all the emails, so, uh, we are hoping to build a solar facility on our property, uh, to subsidize our energy usage, so someday we'll be the first off-grid institution in the United States. That's, that's our goal.
Very nice.
So we'll see.
You mentioned the Southland House. And we, I just talked to Terry and I talked to Ray and we can do a third study this week at the Chamber office. They promised we could open up their space unless we wanna do it here, so what would you advise?
What do we have?
It's about, a lot of people in the community wanna meet the interim chief. Oh, some agencies and stuff, this seems to be a pretty decent board.
I saw those emails and do you think we're gonna have a crowd? I mean, right now, we've got a crowd for us.
Right.
And, uh, the chamber isn't.
Much bigger than this.
Much bigger than this, it is bigger. Did anybody check with the senior citizen to use their facility? Because you, with the senior citizens, you've got the room at this end, which is fairly small, if it's not a big U, and on this end, you've got the huge.
Where we have the.
Where you've had the forums and that sort of thing, so that would seem to give us a choice of two different sizes depending on the crowd. Has anybody checked with them?
I have and I doubt if there's too many people, but you never know.
We have to, we'd have to pay the seniors, I never would.
I think, I think this room here should be sufficient.
I do too.
I really do.
It's still just coming in a lot.
Yeah, if it's like the green.
It's just a meat and green, it's not. Okay, so it'd be four o'clock this Thursday.
Four o'clock this Thursday.
I mean, not tomorrow. Not the after.
They have to have it.
Okay.
I believe so. Interim chief.
Right here, four o'clock. For the new chief.
He's interim chief right now.
So it's meat and green for.
But a lot of people wanted to meet him, so.
I mean, the chief.
This Thursday.
The interim chief. I mean, it's, it's a nice thing, I think a lot of people have concerns. And you might as well talk to the man who's gonna be in charge and, and boy, some of those are, you know, get a feel for. Everybody that I've talked to, that's many of them, worked with him so far, has been uniformly very positive.
What time are we having at?
About four.
Four to.
Six minutes.
At the senior center?
Here, we'll have it.
Or you're gonna have it here?
Yeah.
Did you say this Thursday or next?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Fifteenth.
Hope I remember to put that on my calendar.
Well, put it on Facebook, then you'll be fine. Put it on Facebook, you'll be fine.
I'll send you a text.
It's always a good idea.
Some of us don't get safe, folks, we're diamondborn.
That's probably okay.
A lot of us don't, a lot of us old as far as well, either.
Are we too late for the local paper?
Yeah. Has to be Monday by noon.
She got me.
What?
She said Monday by noon, I said she got me.
I have, I met with the two gentlemen from the Southern Oregon Travel, um, I can't remember exact name of it, but that, they're really good, good men. They're very willing to help with a lot of issues with Lake County and tourism and, uh, we're concerned about the motel tax and I know they were gonna talk to you, but, um, they talked again about the advisory board and how it works and how very, very strict those state regulations and requirements are about what you do with that, that tax money that you bring in. So, I think using them as a source for us, especially since we're just starting, is an excellent idea.
You have to keep in mind that they are a private business, so, just keep that in mind. They're gonna be wanting a lot of those dollars that you're talking about.
Their experience of doing this. They have a lot of experience that we don't have. We could make use of that. We won't always do what we always do and they'll just do exactly what we want, but it's nice to have good advice.
I agree.
Uh, I've also been working with the Chamber. We have been granted the tourism studio, so in April, they'll be starting to have some of these meetings where we start looking at different things that we want to emphasize with the Travel Oregon, uh, project that we're going to be going with. Babysat the Chamber on Friday because our people were, uh, gone, so that was, that was kinda fun. I doubt that they'd had such an unknowledgeable.
Is that a word?
Person in there trying to help them, but I was good at answering phones and picking up things, so it was nice to have the Chamber open when, uh, people just can't be there. So I think I'm on deck for that probably in the future. probably in the future.
I have nothing, but I want to thank people for coming in, I know that everybody has a lot of concerns about that, I have had bad water often on with my house, which was before nineteen ninety-seven, but, we have replaced that pipe, and that does help, and the spring water helps, but I still drink it.
Yeah, thank you all, and it's been great to hear your comments, and I wish you guys could have been at our three o'clock work session, because as the council got well informed from Daryl Anderson on the water master plan that's being updated from the two thousand and one version, so, there's definitely a lot going on in our community, a lot of positives, you know, a few negatives, I hope that we can all stay positive and let that snow off instead of the opposite, and that we'll continue to all work together, because we have a great community, I've been here myself almost seven years, my family came in July, started working remotely, and it's, it's been a great, you know, time to be here, and we're gonna continue to love being here, but it takes a community to, to make it what it is, and when we have the right information, we'll certainly share with you when, when we can, a lot, it's been said about transparency, and, and, you know, a lot of times, you know, when there's legal issues happening, you can't be as, as transparent as you'd like because of, you know, what advice you're getting from legal counsel, so, just keep those things in mind, that we continue to put, you know, Lakeview first, and try to put our best foot forward and make the right steps that we need to work, community, so, again, thank you guys for being here.
It's my turn, other than thanking you all for giving us public input on the issues that we base here.
How do we find out about your meetings? When, when you're gonna have them?
The, the meetings that we have are on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, the second and fourth Tuesday, four P M. is a regular session, we have a work session before it, we have a need for it.
Also, I posted outside the door in the glass cases.
Oh, okay.
No, I told you, did this.
And there is like four?
Anyway, you might be more than me.
Love to.
It gets a little lonely in here, so. We have examiner.
You know, without the public's input, we, we don't have a good vibe on the community, we can see what is on social media, but many times, it's misrepresented and is misconstrued in a lot of ways, and, and a lot of times, it doesn't even have to do in our community, but it's pointed at Lakeview when it is in fact out of our numbers, so, we appreciate the public input that we do get from both of you, and take the time out of your life.
You'd rather you came here than stopped us in the middle of the produce section at St.? It's, it's nice to have you come to us and ask, so that we can, we can tell you what's going on, and you get, and you don't just, again, a lot of good things on Facebook and maybe some things that are quite so good, we just need to be careful with that.
And I, my office is ninety-nine percent open door policy, so unless I'm in a meeting or gone, you know, and I would rather talk and explain what's going on, if I can, than have the questions out there, so. Well, I definitely thank you for today.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nothing else, we'll close the meeting at four fifty-five.